Good afternoon. Welcome, everyone. If you would, please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which the states, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite in justice or law. Thank you. This is the September 12, 2013, meeting of the National Capital Planning Commission. Note for all in attendance, this meeting is being livestreamed by way of the NCPC website. And I do note that we have a quorum, so we will proceed with the agenda that has been publicly advertised. Agenda item number one is the report of the Chairman, and I don't have a report other than to say, as many know, August is the one month of the year that we do not meet as a commission. That does not mean lots of work isn't still going on. And I've stayed in quite close contact with the staff on a number of ongoing major projects and studies that we have. Agenda item number one A is the commission dates for the calendar, and that's at your desk for the calendar year 2014. Let's all go ahead and put these on our calendars shortly, but we have to adopt this. Is there a motion on adopting the calendar, the meeting schedule for 2014? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Thank you. It's adopted. Agenda item number two is the report of the Executive Director, Mr. Acosta.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon. I just have a few announcements to make. Over the month of August, NCPC, the Office of Planning, held five public meetings throughout the city to discuss the Height of Buildings study. I'd like to thank the members of the public who attended that meeting, as well as our counterparts, the Office of Planning, and our own commissioners for participating in these meetings. They were very informative in terms of our study. Over the coming weeks, we have scheduled three additional public meetings for the Height of Buildings study pending today's commission action to release the draft federal interest and findings report. On Wednesday, September 25, at 6:30 PM, there will be an opportunity to update the public on our effort and for the public to ask their questions. Staff will recap the study and also the public feedback we received to date. We'll also present the draft federal interest reports and findings, again, for those who haven't been able to come to today's meeting or catch it on our livestream. Wednesday, October 3, starting at 3:30 PM, we have scheduled a formal public hearing before the commission on the Height study. It is an opportunity for the public to provide their comments and feedback on the draft federal interest report that you will hear about today. Also, the deadline for submitting formal written comments is October 14. This is all, again, pending the adoption or the authorization to release the report today by the commission. Finally, on Thursday, October 17, at 10:00 AM, we have tentatively scheduled a special public commission working session to go over all the findings, all consider the comments from the public, again, and evaluate all other relevant information that we may have received as part of this study before we send along the final comments to Congress. Finally, I'm informing the commission that I've recused myself on a matter on today's consent agenda. Item 7451, Washington Metropolitan Area Transit Authority Strategic Plan. I've recused myself because I am a member of the Womata Board of Directors. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Acosta? Hearing none. Let's return to the agenda item number one A. Mr. Hart may have noted something.
I think there's a typo on the schedule. It indicates October 3, Thursday, is the date for our meeting. Looking at my calendar, it appears that that's October 2, so I move that we make that revision on the schedule.
It's been moved and seconded that we change it from October 3 to October 2 to make sure it's on that Thursday. Or the other way around.
That's the original schedule. Can you reissue the revised one?
So it should be October 2, 2014. All in favor of that? I guess that needs a vote. All in favor of that? Well, is there a motion?
There is a motion.
There is a motion seconded. All in favor of making that change? Say aye. Opposed, no? We're good. Agenda item number four is the consent calendar, and there are four items on the consent calendar. Item 4A is the Walter Reed National Military Medical Center Temporary Medical Facilities at the Naval Support Activity Bethesda. 4B is the National Museum of African American History and Culture. 4C is transfer of jurisdiction related to the old post office building redevelopment. And last, item number 4D is the endorsement of the goals and initiatives of the Momentum Washington Metropolitan Transit Authority Strategic Plan 2013 to 2025. Any questions on the consent calendar? Is there a motion on the consent calendar? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of adopting those four items on the consent calendar, say aye. Opposed, no? They're adopted. Thank you. Agenda item number 5A is the Height Study Act. We have Ms. Kemp. And following her presentation, we'll have a discussion of questions. Let me say, as she is coming, that this has been a long process, and it's been a terrifically good discussion. Today, just make sure we underscore, the only item before us is to put, the question before us is to merely put this out for a 30-day public comment period. That's it. As you'll note in the EDR, that 30-day public comment period will end on October 14. October 14. However, about halfway through that public comment period on October 2, this commission will convene so that we can verbally receive public comment from folks who wish to appear before us, and then we'll move forward to the recommendations on November 7. This keeps us on the timeline that Representative Isa set and to which NCPC and the district agreed. Let me also say a good word on NCPC and district collaboration. We have worked very collaboratively on this whole process. We collaborated on the scope of the study and noting which task items NCPC would be responsible for, which task items the district would be responsible for, and it's been going along swimmingly. And then we had, we've had almost 10 public hearings across phases one and two that the district and NCPC jointly conducted and were very successful. That said, there's still work to be done. Putting this out for public comment today is kind of the next first step in getting, starting the process and getting folks' input. So this EDR and the accompanying findings report, to be sure, however, are only focused on the question of federal interests. That's all it's focused on. The district still has some work to do on their end, and we look forward to the district concluding their work and getting that to us and putting out those issues, also their work for public comment as well. So it's been a long process, still a lot to do on a very important, very important subject, and I'll turn it over to Lucy. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. As you just heard, we are here requesting authorization to release a federal interest findings evaluation and report for a 30-day public comment period. Just to refresh your memories on the sort of important steps that got us to this point, of course, in July 2012, the U.S. House Committee on Oversight and Government Reform held a really important and informative hearing about the HEIGHT Act today. Local and federal agencies shared their views about how the HEIGHT Act is working for the city today and what it might mean for the city in the future. Chairman Isa followed up with a letter in October requesting a formal joint study, and ever since that point, we have been working together with the district on the study. Okay, so for the presentation today, it's roughly cut up into three pieces. The first is an overview of the joint master plan project itself, so a broad overview of all the work we've done to date over the last year. The second is the federal report, the preliminary findings and evaluation. So that is the subject of the EDR before you, as well as the analysis that you were sent last night. As you just heard, the purpose of this is really to focus on federal interests. This is one piece of a much larger study. It's not designed to focus on local interests. We would defer to the district to articulate those goals. So this is one part of the overall effort, and we are putting it forward today to meet the deadline from the committee, as well as our public commitments. So for the purposes of the presentation today, got two sections. One is just an overview of federal interests, and then the second is the findings and conclusions, and then we'll follow up with a short discussion about next steps. Okay. Can't have a presentation on heights without doing the how the HEIGHT Act works today, so please just indulge me. I'll be really quick. As you know, residential streets, one-to-one ratio, a cap of 90. Commercial streets, you get 20 extra feet, a cap of 130. And then on Pennsylvania Avenue, 160-foot cap, and it does apply citywide. Okay, so let's get into the heart of the study overview itself, so what we've been focused on over the last year. The letter from Chairman Isa gave us a couple of really important pieces of guidance. The first was to look for strategic opportunities or changes outside of the LaFonte City that support economic development goals of the district and don't impact federal interests. The second is, you know, if we do propose changes to the HEIGHT Act, to be sure that we protect the LaFonte City. This is an area that's the heart of a lot of national and historic resources, the seat of government and other operations, and so just be very careful with this area. So what Chairman Isa's request really articulates well, I think, is a tension that's probably quite common across a lot of capital cities, which is that the symbolic part of the nation is here. We have our civic institutions and the seat of government and the symbolic places that are important to Americans, as well as projected to the international world. This is the form of our capital city. At the same time, we have a vibrant and growing residential population, 630,000 folks plus, and it's growing. We have 100 diverse neighborhoods, and DC has the needs that all local cities share for housing, commerce, infrastructure, economic development, et cetera. And so Heights is just one of probably a number of areas where these interests intersect. So taking the guidance from Chairman Isa's letter, we early on developed three core principles to help shape our work, and we agreed to these jointly. The first is to ensure the prominence of federal landmarks and monuments by preserving views to and from their settings, and this is something that we've heard from lots of public comments. This is one of the most sort of cherished characteristics of the capital city, that you do have these extraordinary views across the city, long distances, and then street level. This is not just a place of form, but a place of memory, and a lot of really important events of national significance occur here. And I think that's a piece of that identity question and why the setting is so important because of the events that occur here. They're so important to the country. Second, maintain the horizontality of the monumental city skyline. So we have a lot of lower-lying buildings that allow for these symbolic monuments and structures to shine. And then finally, minimize negative impacts to the nationally significant historic resources, including the LaFonte Plan. For this audience, I'm not going to talk too much about the LaFonte Plan. You know about it, but it's sort of a really extraordinary and interesting blend of the man-made and the nature-made. When the city was first planned, it was for a purpose-built seat of government, and it's given us these extraordinary public places. And then on the right, it was situated in a way to respond to topography, which is maybe less appreciated, but really, when you come to DC and you see these extraordinary views, part of it is that we situate really important places in a way that responds to the natural elevations and contours of the city, which is a very nuanced and really incredible thing. So the U.S. Capitol, for example, situated on Jenkins Hill on the right side, the small elevation within the LaFonte City, but certainly when you see the Capitol, you get a sense that it is elevated, and that really emphasizes its importance. Okay, so those are the principles. How did we tackle this work? You've already heard a little bit about this. During Phase 1, we conducted core case study research. We wanted to understand how do other capital cities and other cities around the world manage height? Two, we identified federal and local interests through consultation and other things, and then additional background research. During Phase 2, the District of Columbia prepared visual modeling studies and analysis. You had an opportunity to see the visual modeling work at a July special session. And then in Phase 3, we had preliminary findings. That's why we're here today. That's why I highlight in yellow. Here, related to federal interests, we do have a public hearing planned and final recommendations. We're all moving back from a November submission to the committee, so that's sort of how the schedule is flowing. And then, of course, we had a really robust outreach schedule. We worked very closely with the district to figure out all the different ways that we could engage the public, as well as interested constituencies and organizations, to talk about this topic, and people are really passionate about it, so we tried to find as many ways as possible to reach them. Okay, so let's dig into Part 2, which is the federal report. Again, this is just one piece of an overall study. And for the purposes of the presentation today, we got two different sections. One is a federal interest overview, and then the second, key findings and an evaluation. So the form and character of the capital city really has been a federal interest since its planning. We talked about that earlier with the LaFonte Plan. The setting of iconic federal buildings and grounds such as the White House, the U.S. Capitol, the Lincoln-Jefferson memorials, and the National Mall, all of these are really important, and they're made of granite and stone, yes, but they also have symbolic meaning to people today that endures. And I always think about that particularly with the U.S. Capitol. It's not just the way that it looks or its architecture, it's actually its use. And so the elements of the LaFonte Plan, including reservations, vistas, streets, and open spaces above the street, are all also federal interests. Outside of the LaFonte City, the Civil War defenses of Washington, St. Elizabeth, Arlington National Cemetery, these are all part of the topographic bowl, and there are a lot of interesting views to and from these areas to the LaFonte City. So there are federal interests here. They're perhaps less concentrated, but there are a number of interests situated throughout the city. So one of the things that is so strongly tied to the form and character of Washington is the Height of Buildings Act, and the Height of Buildings, too, is a federal interest. It was originally adopted as a fire safety measure, but if you look at sort of the language and dialogue about the Height of Buildings Act in its various iterations, there's always this discussion about openness or sense of openness. The HEIGHT Act has resulted in Washington's unmistakable skyline. It is recognized around the world. Open streets and framed parks, as well as a setting that we've talked about, views to and from institutions. Most significantly, the Congress strongly reaffirmed the federal interest as it relates to heights during preparation of Home Rule. As most of you know, this act transferred some congressional powers to the district and kept others, including matters related to height, under congressional stewardship. So let's set aside the question for a moment of heights and think about federal interests because the letter asked us to evaluate them, so it's useful to think about what federal interests are. And if you go back to the legislative history during Home Rule, there's actually a really interesting and robust conversation about what federal interest means. Is it a geography? Is it a resource? Is it a function? How does this, how do we define this? And so the committee that was responsible for drafting Home Rule was sort of laid out how it was grappling with this federal interest question. And the first thing, this I took from testimony from the chair of the committee, they solicited views and information from members of Congress. What do you think the federal interest is? They interviewed witnesses throughout the city, both in favor of Home Rule, local autonomy, as well as those familiar with federal operations. They asked some very basic questions. Again, what is the meaning of federal interest? How do you define it? Why is this important? They sought testimony. I'm not being quite as eloquent as the politician who was describing all this, but I took from it that they grappled with this question quite a bit over the years, that they were drafting the Home Rule and in numerous markup sessions. And in 1970, so when they actually proposed Home Rule, as you know, they ended up withholding the HEIGHT Act and affirmatively saying that it was a federal interest, and there are other specific provisions that are included. But going over this legislative history is not meant to be a reason not to have this discussion. In fact, as a planner, this has been one of the most interesting and challenging conversations, so it's a wonderful discussion to have. But the Home Rule conversation was helpful to us for a couple of reasons. First, because it specifically identified heights as a federal interest, and as much as we could claim credit for the list of federal interests in your document, really, we are responding to guidance from Congress. Second, a picture begins to emerge from the discussions in the legislative history that there was a desire to offer long-term protection to the views of the capital city, and that Heights was very strongly tied to that, and that is why ultimately, I understand, Congress retained that stewardship responsibility. Okay, so I'm going to move quickly through the other federal interests. Foreign missions, there are a lot of those kinds of functions here, monuments, memorials, federal buildings, headquarters, there's a range of things. Infrastructure operations down below, this is my attempt to describe lines of sight and some of the security issues and other things. So this is sort of the range of topics that we listed as federal interests as they may relate to height. So just to summarize what you just heard before we move on to the next station or the next section, we talked about the form and character of the capital city. We talked about federal agency headquarters and offices, monuments, memorials, and then matters related to security, infrastructure, and federal operations. Okay, so now we're going to get to the studies, the findings discussion, and how we took those interests and evaluated them. So there are sort of four different sections for how we looked at this important question. The first is an evaluation of those interests we talked about. We looked at legislative history. We talked to federal agencies. I'll get to that a little more in a moment. We looked at our own comprehensive plan policies and other plans and policies. We looked at the core principles and the guidance that we got from Chairman Isa. We have policy-level considerations, equity. We wanted to understand if we were to change HEIGHT Act, who are the winners and losers? We also want clarity in the regulatory review process, and when we get to the discussion later on about penthouses, this is where this sort of comes into play. And then finally, we had important tools, such as the visual modeling study prepared by the District of Columbia. So these are all the agencies that we consulted with in various forms, and we went to them, one, to identify what federal interests are, and, two, to talk about what potential impacts to federal interests, what they might be if we did change the HEIGHT Act and raise heights. And a couple of points, some of these agencies had very broad comments because their interests and operations really are throughout the city. Others had very site-specific comments and concerns, and so the report that you see is sort of broadly framed. We tried to capture the overall themes. Security is a good example. We took comments from a number of agencies and tried to share the nature of the concerns, not sort of the specific, site-specific thing. The other issue, I would say, is what I sort of took from these discussions is that there's not a federal interest or a desire to raise heights or change heights. From a federal operational and mission perspective, we're looking to use our spaces more efficiently to consolidate our spaces. We're doing a lot of mobility and teleworking with the leadership from GSA. So we're not, from an operational perspective, it is not, no one federal agency is making an argument to change heights. So that's, okay. And then we also, we reached out to a number of different organizations, historic preservation experts, other communities, people we thought would want to share. So this is all sort of part of our evaluation process for federal interests. Okay, so we've got, the visual modeling study is one of the most important tools that we have to evaluate impacts of raising heights to federal interests, and this was a really important sort of conceptual illustration of what that might look like. These are massing studies. We framed our comments quite broadly because we're not sort of responding to a specific proposal to change heights. We were asked to evaluate potential impacts to federal interests, so I think you might find the findings framed broadly for that reason, and with a long-term perspective in mind. And so what I'm going to do is just really quickly run through a series of images. All of these are credited to DC and the modeling work, and these are areas, just a few, that we selected where the settings of, you know, federal places would change as a result of heights, and there's a little more comments and information in the write-up that you got last night. So this is the U.S. Capitol building, existing conditions, and you'll look to the right for the increases in height. You see the White House sort of in a distance. So this is at 130, and again, Harriet always very eloquently prepared the audience for how to think about the transition between the existing conditions to the modeling work. You can see something just over to the left there as well at 160, 180, and then 200 feet. Views of the Capitol from North Capitol Street, existing conditions, and then at 130 and And if you, I'm just going to kind of move through these. I know you've all seen them. If you want me to slow down, just let me know. View from Pennsylvania Avenue at 160. One of the things about the modeling work that's important to remind you of is that there was an assumption that historic buildings and structures would not increase in height, so for purposes of the modeling work, that's one of the reasons why you see some structures popping up while others stay low at 180 and then 200. The view from Frederick Douglass House. The long views are some of the most interesting, I think. So again, here's the move, so prepare yourselves for the 130, okay? And then 160, 180, and 200. Okay, and from Arlington Cemetery, a different perspective. 160, 180, and then 225. This was the clusters approach, so you see handfuls of buildings popping up in different neighborhoods. And then finally, from Pennsylvania Avenue Southeast, we looked both at increasing heights sort of within this area, outside the LaFonte City, and then what would happen from that view if you had additional height increases within the topographic bowl? And so one of the lively debates we had internally is, you know, is this a federal interest? And if so, why? I certainly have a planning and design thought about it, but anyway, these are the kinds of discussions we've had internally, and we'll welcome your feedback and the public's when we have our meeting next month. Oh, I'm sorry, I have one more. This is the view of the White House from the Jefferson going up to 200. Okay, so there is, there are some comments that we put together in that, in the report that you received last night related to these and how sort of federal resources and establishment might be affected by these height increases. Okay, so there were a couple of additional things, as you remember, security operations and infrastructure. So on the security, again, what we tried to do is take the comments we got from the agencies and capture them in sort of broad themes or comments, and essentially what we heard is, you know, if you have a federal agency and buildings around it start to go up a good bit higher, we'd need to reassess our sightlines, and there will be costs associated with those assessments and whatever measures are taken to respond. From an operation and infrastructure perspective, we heard from many, many members of the public, as well as federal agencies and other local agencies, infrastructure is a really important, fundamental question, and everyone wanted to understand how increases in height would affect infrastructure. For the purposes of this study, we didn't look specifically at infrastructure, but it's something that certainly merits additional work. And then finally, there are other site-specific matters. Again, we're not, we're sort of broadly framing our analysis. We're not looking at a specific proposal, but I'm going to assume that if we increased height near an airport, for example, we would be looking at flight patterns and other things. be looking at flight patterns and other things. So I think, you know, as we get further down the road, if we're responding to something more specific, that would become a much more specific assessment. And finally, the federal government absolutely has an interest in the vitality and the strength of the district. And we have transferred federal land to DC, I think most recently in 2007. We also locate federal facilities and neighborhoods throughout the city. Often, these decisions are made, of course, for federal operational reasons, but they are located in neighborhoods that maybe the district has identified for economic redevelopment, job growth, et cetera. So I think there will always be many opportunities for us to work together to achieve that goal. Okay, so the last bit of this is, you know, what are some of our conclusions? What messages, what are sort of our take-home messages from this evaluation? First, we heard a lot of comments, there's a lot of interest in understanding federal and local guidance related to penthouses and uses. And these two, federal and local guidelines, work together. And so there's an interest in having a broader range of active uses in penthouses, and we are willing to look at that and figure out language that would make that work from the federal perspective or side of it. We spent a lot of time in this, second, we spent a lot of time in this discussion talking about how important the LeFond City is, and in particular, federal resources outside of the LeFond City and the topographic bowl, which is shown here on the left. There may be some opportunities for strategic changes to the Hyde Act outside of these areas. We would defer to the district to make some proposals there, and we'll evaluate accordingly. Again, this is sort of more broadly framed. We're not looking at a specific proposal at this time, but we remain willing to do that in the future. Okay, just in terms of next steps, I would like to make a correction. October 14th is a holiday. Now, we are willing to work on holidays, but just so that we're all clear, the date is actually the 15th. So October 15th, I apologize. So if you can make note there, that's the end of the 30-day public comment period. But everything else stands. We are looking forward to a commission meeting on October. The second, to hear testimony from the public, we welcome the public's feedback on this important topic. The October 15th, the 30-day public comment period ends, and then we will be working to meet that House committee's deadline for a November submission date. So with that, in conclusion, we request authorization to release the federal portion of the study for a 30-day public comment period ending October 15th. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, with that.
Thank you, Ms. Kemp. Let me ask, on the EDR, do we need to change the, do we need a motion to change October 15th date on the front page of the EDR? So we can just administratively change that? Okay. Everyone understand we're changing it on the front page of the EDR from October 14th to 15th, and that does not require a motion. Thank you, Ms. Kemp, for the presentation. Comments, questions, discussion from commissioners? Ms. Regoney.
Thank you very much. Let me just reiterate some of the things that both Marcel and Lucy articulated, that we've had a very good working relationship with our federal partners in conducting this study. It's a, you know, we've always known that the end of the day, we may not be utterly in lockstep in terms of what our recommendations are for the city. But I think that everyone, especially the public, benefited from our joint efforts and real intense public outreach with many, many different meetings. And so the NCPC staff in particular were terrific, and I have to say outnumbered our planning staff at most meetings in terms of the preparation, so for which we're very, very grateful. And I also appreciate this thorough articulation of the federal interests because I think that was also a topic that came up in a lot of meetings. And I think that everyone's going to benefit from being able to mull over how that interest has been articulated. And I guess I would finally say that, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm treating this as a draft. It'll get public comment, and it will also be further informed by the recommendations that will come from the district about what changes, if any, in the Federal Height of Buildings Act the district would like to be a proponent of. I appreciate the delicacy that the commission, that the staff in particular has exercised in not getting out in front of the mayor. Last July, the position that was articulated at the hearing that was about occupied penthouses was that we supported it. And that is the last stated position that the mayor has taken on this issue. And so I think this is a very helpful document that lets people understand how the federal government is defining the federal interest, but also creates a framework under which the, any further recommendations coming from the district about height will be able to be evaluated and considered.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Ms. White.
I just wanted to make a general comment and really compliment the staff and the partnership work with the district. And I know I brought up early on in urging you to do public outreach, and I'm really impressed with the effort that was put forth and the number of comments that you got. And I like that you told us how many states and how many countries. And I hope in the next 30 days, we'll even get more reaction to this initial study. So my compliments. I know it was a yeoman's effort, so thank you.
Other comments? Mr. Miller.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the things that I think many of us were struck by at all the public presentations, I went to many of the public presentations, and it's indicated in this report, but maybe not emphasized enough, is that how much of the district's comprehensive plan, local elements of the comprehensive plan and our zoning code further restrict the height much more than, much lower than the Hyde Act would allow. And I think that speaks in part to the fact that the district itself, along with the federal government, has been a steward of this iconic skyline that we all appreciate. So I just wanted to emphasize that point. I think there are opportunities for changes in select areas, and I look forward to seeing the recommendations that will be coming from the district. Part of the, as I understand, part of the additional time, which only a week or two, as I understand it, that is needed for additional analysis, is analysis that was requested by the public in terms of capacity, analysis, how much the existing Hyde Act would accommodate, and when we would need to make adjustments. That was a strong point that the public asked for in the Phase II public outreach. And so I think the district's recommendations will be informed by that analysis, and that, I think, can then get folded in to the, I hope it gets folded into what could be a joint report. I think it's stronger if it is a joint report. It can still be the subject of the public here. I think it'll be out well in advance of the public hearing that's scheduled, the public comment session that's scheduled here for October 2nd. So I think the public will have an opportunity to comment on the report the district puts out. So those are just some of the comments I wanted to make, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Just clarification, so the additional information coming from the district will be out shortly?
Next week. Yeah, I'm happy to go on record and clarify that.
Yeah, just to make sure that the public will be able to see everything.
Absolutely.
Okay, great, perfect. That's very helpful. And the staff will prepare for being able to do that. That's terrific. Other discussion points? Please.
So I understand the timeline, but I have a question about process. So we get the public comments. This is the EDR, this is a declaration of federal interests. Do we have a declaration from the district on home rule issues at some point? I mean, because, so what I'm trying to get at is, when do we all sort of, I mean, I'm assuming after the public comment period, the various agencies and the city takes some kind of a position. And then, how do we, as a commission, how, what's the plan for reaching a consensus position for the contents of the report?
So you have the schedule in front of you, I think.
Yeah, I got that.
So that next week, the district's recommendations will be out to the public and out to the commission. On October 2nd, we'll begin to take public comment and public testimony. On October 17th, we're going to have a working session, right, of all of us?
Right.
So we can duke some of these issues out. And then we'll take a vote on the 7th, is the plan of November, on a final EDR.
So there will be, that's, this is what I'm getting at. So how will the juxtaposition or the melding of the district and federal positions be crafted? Is that, so that will be crafted by the staff, and then we'll be given a document that we vote up and down on? Or amend, or do the usual wordsmithing?
Usual, that's the usual.
Yep. I think that's, I think all that's yet to be determined.
Looking forward to that.
Don't want to know how the sausage is made.
Okay. And how many days do we have planned for that?
Well, again, as we've mentioned, all that's yet to be determined how we go about it, but that's the process. We'll see, we'll obviously try to get to consensus, as we typically try to do. And then we're obviously operating under the timeline that Congressman Isa has given us. And then our report is our report, whatever it is, and then we give it back to Representative Isa and the committee, and we'll see where that goes.
Can I just speak to this? I will say that, I'll reiterate how much we appreciate working with the commission and the staff, and how much we hope to be able to arrive at a consensus. That's our hope. But that the mayor was independently asked for a position, and if there's not a consensus, that we'll be sending a separate report to, you know, under the mayor's signature to, you know, to the committee. Now, that being said, I feel fairly confident that there will be some degree, at a minimum, some degree of consensus, and we'll try to see what we can do to persuade the commission to get as large a consensus as possible. But unlike some other actions that the commission takes, you know, I don't, the district doesn't feel like it's bound by the commission report. We're happy to be represented on the commission and to work together. I'll say that again, and it's been helpful to do that. But we, because of the differences that you already raised, that there's a local interest, there's an issue of self-governance and home rule, you know, our own interests would talk a lot more about the vitality of the city and the, you know, the difficulty in being economically stable when half the property is off of our tax rules. But that'll all be coming in a report from us. But we're looking forward to the conversation and continuing to have a very cordial, very civil, very respectful dialogue about these issues that are so important to the future of our city. And it has been great to work with NCPC and our federal partners thus far, and I look forward to that conversation.
Mr. Dennis.
Thank you. Just want to thank Lucy Kemp for that excellent report and background and analysis, and to the NCPC staff and to the city for cooperating with us on the timelines, which were mutually agreed to by an exchange of letters last year and which are so important to us. Among all the other interesting aspects of the presentation, I thought the background on the Home Rule Act was particularly interesting to us and provides us some useful information going forward. So we're looking forward to continued adherence to the mutually agreed-upon deadlines and receiving final recommendations on November 7th.
Thank you. Mr. Wells.
Thank you very much. I think this is an interesting, somewhat unique civic lesson for everyone that's in the district. I am curious, especially when you were showing the slides, which obviously, thank you very much, that helps someone like me who's very visual, that I understand that there's a federal interest in sightlines to monuments, federal buildings and such, of what creates the character of a Capitol. But when you get further out, this whole idea of the bowl and such, and I'm looking through here, did you come down with any, or the committee come down with any clear guidance on whether actually the whole city functions as a monument? And that the sightlines need to remain clear, it's not sightlines just on corridors, but it's being able to view the city from, you know, from Pennsylvania Avenue in the south end of it was a profound look as well. Is there any clear guidance and recommendation on that? Is that the city itself a monument?
I think that's such an interesting point. We had a lot of members of the public talk about an interest in view shed protections that would be sort of citywide or in certain locations. And I think you've well articulated why that might be of interest. At this point, the evaluation is sort of broadly framed, but I think that's something that we can certainly look at as we get down the road a bit, so absolutely.
And it's more of a question than a recommendation?
Yeah, no, I mean, that's.
Thank you.
Ms. Regoney.
I'm somewhat reiterating in the specific instance what my colleague, Mr. Miller, spoke about in terms of our own historic protections in the city. I like to look at the example of 16th Street, which under the Hyde Act could have a height higher than 90 feet, but by local law is restricted to 90 feet because it's the approach to the White House. And we wanted to make it special and to protect the views and the significance of that building, which isn't a very tall building. So, you know, part of what I think my colleague was, the point he was making is that it's not just a federal interest to protect view sheds in the city, it's also a local interest and one that we guard very zealously, and I have no reason to believe that would go away if the federal government were to decide, they didn't have a federal interest in a height being limited to 130 feet for commercial buildings and 90 feet on, sorry, commercial streets and 90 feet on residential streets.
Mr. Provenjo.
I would like to add my voice to that, fellow commissioners who have commented the staff and Ms. Kemp on the presentation and the high quality of the analysis, to help further define and to allow us to do business case, evidence-based, fact-based decision-making on the impacts from the federal interest, particularly for the security. I've reached out recently to the interagency security committee and have received a draft, and I want to reiterate, it's a very preliminary draft, but they have begun to conceptualize and formulate and articulate to a greater degree what those security interests are. They'll fall along the lines of what we have discussed in some of our previous working group meetings, new and increased threats from what they call overwatch positions. While the agencies do have the ability to detect, to monitor, to counteract, mitigate defeat, those all come at a cost. New threat assessments would need to be accomplished, designs would need to be made for countermeasures types of equipment, additional staff probably would have to be brought on board, there would be training costs for the equipment in the precincts where you have these modifications of the Hyde Act. The precincts and probably down to the individual building level would be changes in, potentially for concept of operations, changes of plans, exercises, system maintenance, security upgrades, equipment upgrades, those types of things. So we're beginning to, again, formulate and better define what the, particularly the security interests are. Some of the other infrastructure interests would include, of course, transportation, utility, infrastructure, capacity, which we hope to have future data so we can better model those things also.
Ms. Regoney.
I would just point out, I'm not, you know, the EDR is drafted, and we'll all have a chance to make comments on it, so I don't intend to do a lot of that today. But to the point that both that Ms. Kemp raised and that Commissioner Provenjo just raised, I mean, right now, security is something that trumps height today. The architect of the Capitol.
The architect of the Capitol has told us more than once that there were buildings that couldn't be constructed at a certain height or that had to be changed in their construction because of security issues. And that's, it's not written into the Hyde Act, but it's something that governs in our city. You mentioned not wanting to build a building in the district that would get, that FAA might object to because of its height on the approach presumably to National Airport. Well, Arlington is not governed by the Hyde Act, and yet FAA is perfectly able to restrict the heights of buildings in Roslyn, you know, under their own authority. So I don't want us to think that this is our only opportunity under the Hyde Act to protect other federal interests that are perfectly well-protected without being specifically mentioned or controlled as a matter of height. So that, you know, those protections are out there where, to the extent the federal government, you know, is in the city in the future, concerns about security are accommodated every single day. We have our own rules about the public space, but we make modifications every day to accommodate federal security concerns, and that has nothing to do with the Hyde Act. So I'll just say that.
Sensing no additional comment, is there a motion on the EDR? It's been moved and seconded that the EDR be passed as written. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The EDR will be put out for public comment. Thank you. Agenda item number 6A is the expansion project at the Kennedy Center for the Performing Arts, and we have Mr. Hart.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. Before you today is, you'll have, you'll see an information presentation for an expansion project at the John F. Kennedy Center for the Performing Arts. NCPC staff, along with CFA and the National Park Service, have consulted with the Kennedy Center representatives for the past year since the project was first announced. The main goal of the project is to provide much-needed onsite rehearsal space for performers as well as some additional space while providing more public access to the, for the arts to the general public. To put this project in a little context, NCPC planning initiatives like the 1996 Extending the Legacy Plan and the 2009 Monumental Core Framework Plan, both have included access to the Kennedy Center as an important link. In November of 2007, the Kennedy Center River Access Project was reviewed by the commission, and this was the last commission, last project that the commission formally reviewed at this site. This project consisted of a link from the west terrace down to the Rock Creek Parkway Trail. The Kennedy Center will, currently that project is in, is on the back burner, and the Kennedy Center will make a decision on the River Access Project following the outcome of this expansion process. And that because, that's because this project actually includes a pedestrian link to the trail. Only one of these pedestrian access projects will be pursued, not both of them. In either case, the projects would require coordination with the National Park Service as it has jurisdiction over Rock Creek Parkway as well as the Potomac River bit. And I'll also note that CFA has heard this information presentation at its July 22nd, 2013 meeting, and they strongly supported the design that you'll see in a few minutes. Finally, I wanted to note that NCPC does have an approval authority over the project, and we are co-leads in the National Environmental Policy Act, or NEPA, process with, along with the National Park Service and the Kennedy Center. The NEPA process started this summer with a scoping meeting nearly two months ago, and it will continue on into the fall. With this background in mind, I will now turn the presentation over to Ms. Claudette Donlin, who is the Executive Vice President of the Kennedy Center for the Performing Arts. She will provide some brief remarks, as well as introduce the project architect, Mr. Stephen Hall of Stephen Hall Architects. Ms. Donlin.
Thank you very much. I'm Claudette Donlin with the Kennedy Center. I'm the Executive Vice President. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we're very pleased to present our concept for our expansion project for informational purposes today. This expansion project is approximately 60,000 square feet and is located on the south end of the Kennedy Center site. In comparison to the million and a half square feet of the current building, this is a relatively small expansion. The primary purpose, as Mr. Hart was mentioning, is for, to provide dedicated space for classrooms and for rehearsal rooms, as well as some space for events such as dinners and receptions. The Kennedy Center currently presents approximately 2,000 performances every year. We have three performing arts organizations that are now part of the Kennedy Center, the National Symphony Orchestra, the Washington National Opera, Suzanne Farrell Ballet. We also have a resident orchestra that plays for opera and ballet performances, and we self-produce theater productions, at least one a year. With all of that happening in the building, we have inadequate rehearsal space to support all of those activities. The Kennedy Center also has the largest performing arts education program in the country, yet we have no dedicated classrooms. Spaces such as atrium and the foyers on the upper level, hallways, conference rooms, et cetera, are used to accommodate these education activities, lectures, lunches, and sometimes more than one of those events over the course of a day. In addition, one of our goals for this expansion project is to provide greater access to the performing arts for the general public. The expansion is meant to include an outdoor video wall, which will provide a way to simulcast performances outdoors for free, providing greater access to the general public. In addition, the plans include a floating pavilion on the river that is connected to the Rock Creek and Potomac Trails and the Kennedy Center. The pavilion will provide a place for children and families to experience the performing arts for free in an interactive environment. Through a feasibility study that was conducted approximately two years ago and a year-long architect selection process, a variety of concepts for this expansion have been considered. The goal was to maintain the Edward Durrell Stone Building as an iconic image and have a design that is complementary and respects the existing structure. The concept that we'll show you today, designed by Stephen Hall Architects, we think meets these criteria. The Kennedy Center's expansion plan is also sensitive to the commission's work and does not conflict or preclude any elements of the framework plan from being realized in the future. We feel it exhibits sensibility to the environment and the mission of the Kennedy Center. It fuses the expansion with the landscape and the riverfront, and it creates a sense of place by landscaping the entire south side, adding gardens and putting the current surface parking lot underground. And lastly, with a floating pavilion on the Potomac River, it provides the long-desired connection to the river and the trail. As Mr. Hart mentioned, we are currently going through the NEPA process and Section 106 process with the expectation to release a draft EA in late November for public review and comment. Following the NEPA completion, we will present the project to you for preliminary review. And now it's my pleasure to introduce to you Stephen Hall Architects to present and review his concept for the project.
Good afternoon. I'm Stephen Hall, Stephen Hall Architects, 40-person firm based in New York and Beijing, established by me in 1977 in New York. And I want to say that it's a great, great honor to be working on this project. It's a small project for us, but it's a wonderful, wonderful place, and we really are very enthusiastic about making this extension to a living memorial. My presentation, I think, is short. I don't know how to run this machine, yeah? A very important location, of course, in relation to the morphology of the Longfond Plan and the river, and a place that's been cut off, in a way, by freeways and roads. You all know it. In fact, this area on the south, its primary area is on the south side of the Edward Durrell Stone rectangle, and a place that could really be a great public place, and it's just a kind of disused place at the moment. So there are five basic concepts. Three entry pavilions that form the extension, a fusion with landscape and the river, an instrument of natural light, material innovation, and the relation to the existing building, and ecological integration. So first, the three pavilions. We had from the beginning the idea that this project, rather than be an object tacked onto the edge of the box, would be an extension into the landscape and also, in a way, an extension into the city with views, for example, to the Lincoln Memorial and Memorial Bridge, right from the first sketches. So we divided, we've connected all the area below, it's almost as if you have a layer below, and then these three things come up and bring light and views to the extension. So we have the entry pavilion, the glissando pavilion, which is the main event space, and the river pavilion. And you can see also, these pavilions are situated strategically to form views to the Lincoln Memorial and connect to the city and to the Roosevelt Island. This will provide pedestrian access for tourists and anyone coming from the Lincoln Memorial to walk along the river edge, arrive at our river pavilion, and actually have pedestrian access to the new gardens that are surrounding this extension. It also will provide access from the north, from Georgetown. So in a way, it's a kind of urban, even though it's a small project, it has real urban implications in terms of circulation and the potential of connection, also by bicycle and by foot. We anticipate the possibility of a future bridge crossing that spaghetti loop of freeways that would connect to our entry pavilion. So the project will be, the design development will be carried out with the hope of the possibility of a pedestrian bridge, which would allow pedestrian circulation directly to the Capitol. The entry pavilion is a standalone entry, but it's connected below grade to all the functions, rehearsal halls and the new things that we're adding on to the building. You can see there, future pedestrian bridge connection at the top, and the possibility of bringing light to all these functions. You know, the existing Edward Durrell Stone Building is like a marble box, and even offices, there's only a few offices that get natural light. All the functions in this new extension will have natural light. You can see there, that red arrow, that's the entry pavilion where that watercolor just showed you. You can see the position of the three pavilions in this view. This is a computer rendering, so it's very abstract, but you see the possibility of viewing in right at the entrance. You can view in and start to see the activities of rehearsal and the activities of the arts. That's another, let's say, Michael Kaiser and I have been working on developing the idea that you could look in and see rehearsals going on, so that there'll be an engagement with the public to the activities that are going on in this space. Here you can see how we accommodate some of the functions. It's a two-story project, but it's all below grade, and only the pavilions come up from the landscape. And you can see the glissando pavilion, the point of entry. There'll be offices, all the offices will have natural light and ventilation. On the lower level, you have the main rehearsal space. The size of that comes from being exactly the same size as the stage in the Opera House. And you have multipurpose practice rooms, a lecture hall, and all the facilities that they need with light, natural light and air. There's a view into the main rehearsal space. Views to the Potomac are achieved because of the shift in the landscape. This is the glissando pavilion. This is a main events pavilion for fundraisers of urgently needed facility for the many functions that go on at the Kennedy Center. It's based on the idea of a glissando, this notion of, it's, the easiest way to explain that is when you take a violin bow and you run it over all the strings, you get this feeling of a connection. And that's kind of the spatial idea that we're achieving here with the light coming in from above and views, great views, to the river and to the new landscape. Many different uses for this, but probably the most important one are fundraising events. That means catering and kitchen services and access to this are primary. The height of this entire project is no higher than a residential building, actually. It's 35 feet maximum height. You can see the height of the Kennedy Center itself at 105 feet, a lot less than 200 feet. By the way, I live in the West Village where you would never go 200 feet in the West Village. That's why it's such a beautiful area of Manhattan. Nice. There, you see the landscape. These are computer drawings. We will be developing this with the landscape architect and choosing the proper vegetation to integrate with the climate of Washington, DC. Views from the bridge and views to the Potomac River and views to the Lincoln Memorial all have created the positioning of these three pavilions. There'll be a simulcast so that people that can't afford tickets to these events can sit outside and watch. We have figured that we can get as many as 3,000 seats, I believe it is, we arrange. So there would be a great public potential of this extension to people that can't afford to be having tickets to great events inside the Kennedy Center. Fusion with the landscape and river, that's central to the idea. Remember the first drawings of Edward Durrell Stone, the whole Kennedy Center was right there on the river. In fact, it opened right onto the river. And for economic reasons, it was cut back and turned into a box. My first sketch I did was that the idea that this wouldn't just be an extension, but it would be also a public access to the river. And at this stage, we're very happy to say that we've been through a few presentations, and even the Army Corps of Engineers is positive, so. In fact, I dealt with the Army Corps of Engineers before, so I know how hard they are. I worked for Lawrence Halpern as a landscape architect for five years in the 70s and had to meet with them. This is a landscape concept sketch, and the idea really is to connect this living memorial to various aspects of JFK's life, such as 46 genko trees and 35 lavender rows. And this is in the development, but so this would be a landscape of experience and a landscape intimate for the public. And you can see the access, the pedestrian access. There's an elevator in the river pavilion that provides handicap access, and then we have direct access into the Kennedy Center. We see the glissando pavilion as an instrument with natural light. Here you see the offices, they're the only natural light in the Edward Durrell Stone Building. And our project, due to the shifts in the landscape, you get natural light virtually in all the new spaces. So I'm sure everyone's going to be fighting over getting their offices into this extension. Material innovation and the relation to the existing building. This new pavilion will be built out of the same marble, the Carraro marble. We're going to the Carraro quarry that Edward Stone's marble comes from, and, but with the new dimension of the CNC cutting and shaping allows us to make these curves in marble, just completely just running the drawings from our digital, our digital three-dimensional drawings directly to the quarry. So this is a new process. So in a way, it's a new dimension to the existing, connecting to this existing materiality. The other material is ochalux, which is a highly environmental material, allowing us a kind of soft light, and it also has a soft matte finish at the end. So the glass parts of the pavilion won't be shiny. There'll be a matte finish, not unlike what we did in Biarritz for the Surf Museum in Biarritz, which is a beautiful pavilion, which was realized three years ago. An ecological integration, this will all be LEED's top rating in terms of what we're working now with Matthias Schuler, who's organizing all the different aspects. So in every way, we've actually gone beyond this drawing. We're not going to be needing the geothermal wells in order to get our highest LEED's rating in the building. There's a lot of green here. This is a project we did 10 years ago, the Lake Whitney Water Treatment Plant. That was the largest green roof in the state of Connecticut when it was built. So this green roof aspect and the planting is. So this green roof aspect and the planting is key in making these great public spaces, as well as accommodating all the different aspects. Is this the video? I believe this is the video. No, I think it's one more. At night, this will be a wonderful addition, because even though it's very small, it'll have this feeling of glow as it was reflecting in the river. And I think this is a, this is a video that we showed early on. And I say it's a living memorial, and the River Pavilion itself, what we would like to do is inscribe letters in the glass of some of the quotes that Kennedy had about water. And here are two of them that we proposed. "Anyone who can solve the problems of water will be worthy of two Nobel Prizes, one for peace and one for science." And he also said, "I really don't know why it is that all of us are so committed to the sea, except I think it is because, in addition to the fact that the sea changes and ships change, it is because we all came from the sea. And it is an interesting biological fact that all of us have in our veins the exact same percentage of salt in our blood that exists in the ocean. And therefore, we have salt in our blood and in our sweat and in our tears. We are tied to the ocean, and when we go back to the sea, whether it is to sail or to watch it, we are going back from whence we came." These are abstract computer drawings, but it shows you the spatial feeling, the kind of spatial energy that we've been able to achieve basically below grade. This is moving from the existing building. As soon as you arrive in this new place, you see the Potomac River. And that's that great event space. And we see this, in a way, energizing the Kennedy Center as a living memorial. You know, these great memorials along the Potomac, and this one has a potential to get more life in it, in a way to bring it to the public, to bring the public to the river edge, to get out of the marble box and be able to expand into the landscape and activate that part of that site. Thank you.
Stay for questions. Yes, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hall. Are there questions or comments on the presentation of this very exciting project? Mr. Miller?
So this will be coming back for concept review in November or December, is that correct?
It'll be coming back. It may be concept, it may be preliminary, depends on kind of what's done between now and then. But it's, it'll definitely come back like about before the end of the year.
I would just thank you for your presentation, and I think it's very exciting, connecting the Riverwalk, north and south, and it looks very, it's activating that space in the outdoor viewing area, making it more accessible to the public, the great performances that are there. I think it's all very exciting. That event space that you're having, that you talked about, which has those amazing views, is it just going to be event space, or is there going to be a cafe, a restaurant in there that the public would be able to?
There's, right now in the program, there's a cafe in the River Pavilion, so you can actually go to the River Pavilion and have a glass of wine at sunset, right? I mean, that's the hope. So that's going to be quite a wonderful place. And, you know, we envision many uses for that space, but the main, okay, the main reason it's this particular size is for like 300, seating of 300, serving a good fundraising dinner.
Thank you. From the district's perspective, I'm not sure what the sales tax situation is with Kennedy Center, but if it's like the rest of the federal establishment, and we would encourage you to apply the district's local sales tax to the sale of beverages and food in that pavilion, so that we can, so we all can benefit from that.
That may be beyond the designer's scope, but.
Mr. Goni?
I think this is also, I appreciate the presentation, and we'll look forward to seeing the next iteration of design, but it's, I got to be present when Mr. Kaiser made the presentation about these plans with the mayor, and we were very encouraging. The question I have is about the potential conflict between private event space and public access, and so I don't expect you to necessarily answer that now, and it's more an operational issue. But we have some of these spaces in the city that are intermittently privatized or intermittently secured, and when the public is not aware of their access, it happens when you go to the zoo sometimes, that it's closed for a private event without necessarily notice to the public who thinks of it as open, how those operational issues are going to be handled.
We're working on that right now. In fact, we just had a four-hour meeting yesterday exactly about that point, so.
So we'll be interested in hearing about that.
We're going to have alternate routes, right. So that they can actually, if they come from the Lincoln Memorial, that they can cross and walk as a pedestrian and bypass any event that might be going on. No, we're working on the alternate routes, exactly that point.
And just to also figure out maybe ways to manage people's expectations at an earlier point about whether or not they'll be able to enjoy the amenities that would otherwise be available to them or not.
Right.
Thank you.
Mr. Proventur?
Very exciting project, very impressive. To be commended with your coordination with the Corps of Engineers. That's frequently a challenge, so we commend you and admire.
We enjoy the challenge.
Progress there.
Also coordinated with FAA because of the proximity to the flight path to Reagan.
But it's very low. This is 35 feet max, so.
Not only the height of buildings, but the lighting and so forth.
Right.
Okay. Emergency access from the river for first responders that might have to respond to.
We're just on the middle of working on that, too. We're in, what we would call it is we're at about 50% or 60% schematic design phase. All these issues will be addressed, and when we come to you again, we can have whatever you want. I think we're finishing this in the next month, so.
Yeah, realizing you're just conceptual, these are thoughts for future consideration. No concept for a marina docking?
Not at the moment.
That type of thing?
The CFA mentioned the possibility of a ferry connection, you know, the pedestrian ferry connection in the future. So we're going to study a plan, a diagram of how that could work.
Are the outdoor screens angled so that, I'm thinking of large events, flotilla of boats wanting to moor temporarily and watch events from the river?
Actually, we only have, this is a little bit misleading, because Michael Kaiser and the staff have come down to having just one simulcast screen, which is on the north side of the Glissando, the main events pavilion. So it's only going to be one screen.
Got you. Thank you. Other questions or comments? Ms. Wright, and then Mr. Wells.
So I can't tell from this, and I know you're at a very early stage, I can't tell if you've been, and it's probably not in your purview to address any of these traffic nightmare problems. I mean, this is a traffic black hole. I've lived here a lot of years, and I still miss that parking lot. So I, you know, where you're supposed to go into the underground. So I have questions about that, which, it's not like you're in the business of rerouting So I wonder, given the fact that you may not be able to address these issues, if there isn't an awful lot happening in a very small space. And it just seems really, and I know that the light is purposeful and you have a program, it just feels really complicated in an already really, or complex, well, no, complicated in an already complex location.
I think it's, in the end, you'll, when I, when we show you the different routes and any of the questions that you have, you'll see how basically simple it can be, because it's basically, we've inserted all the functions under the landscape, and there's these three pavilions that bring light down, and the landscape folds to bring light in. It's not really complicated, it just looks complicated. It's quite simple, actually.
Okay. Well, that's kind of what I'm getting at. I think it looks, it looks very complicated.
Part of that has to do with, there are a number of underground utilities that we had to go around, and we solved all those problems. We met with the engineers here in DC, and the civil, and the sewers. So there's a lot of things I can't show you, it would take me an hour, but we've solved the complicated parts. And that, together with the access, brings us to the geometry. In other words, there's a very large sewer box control point that's been approved, and now it can be underground, that allows us to do this project. And those things, all those issues have been solved. So now we're up above and we're solving issues of access and some of the other remarks. That's in the process.
So, but if I'm driving around, I'm not thinking, damn, they did a hell of a job resolving that sewage location.
No, you won't see any of that.
Right. So I'm still, I'm, I'm still having, I'm still having some, it makes me uncomfortable. I'm not understanding the big idea of the gesture. I understand that you don't want to add on. We do a lot of adding on of, you know, to these monumental buildings and these diminutive little things.
Just an object add onto the box, right.
Things, yeah. So I love that, but I'm not sure that I understand the vocabulary.
Well, one thing I could refer you to, similar, a project we did that's similar is the Nelson Atkins Museum in Kansas City, which was completed in 2007. In fact, Time Magazine said it was the greatest museum of the year in 2007. An equally difficult problem. And a similarity is this, there is a 1937 neo-Roman, Breco-Roman, neoclassical stone building, and all the other competitors added on. They, you know, at, in a way obliterated the north face. And we decided not to add on, but to come in from below and bring the addition into the landscape, merging it with the landscape. And it's a great space. I mean, I invite you to go and see it, and it's wonderful, but it's not easy to do that. But in the end, we had the support of all the historians, because we didn't deface the original building. The opposite approach is like the Metropolitan Museum in New York. Once you add on one piece, it's like a bag of cats. You just keep adding on, and you ruin and ruin and ruin. And the Metropolitan Museum in New York is, as far as I'm concerned, and that department is a disaster. So I think one of the, one of the aspects of this approach is not to touch the Edward Durrell Stone building. That stays as a marble box, and everything is connected below. So there's a basic, I think, sensible strategy that I think proves, is proven out in the Nelson Atkins. So to do that, you have to, you have to maneuver a lot of different things. But in the end, it's quite simple, because it's all landscape and very small building elements.
Mr. Wells?
Maybe you've answered this, but I do worry about the whole access and multimodal relationship, that it is a very car-based place, and I have not thought about it enough about what the alternatives are myself. But I do know that when, you know, we go to the Kennedy Center, that we drive, and I rarely have taken, and I'm very, very multimodal, that, and I don't even think about it. I just say, okay, of course, we're going to drive there. So you're looking at adding, making it even more of an activity center, or a center for activity, which hopefully would bring more people. And only additional access I see is the walking path type connection to the Lincoln Memorial. What else could be done in thinking through that if we take this isolated area, an isolated area that is likely going to continue to be a car-based approach, what else can be done that when we add more activities there, more people there, to get, to become a more multimodal access place?
The expansion itself will actually not result in additional activities at our prime time, which is in the evening. Those events, the things that are happening in the expansion, the classrooms, rehearsals, those sorts of things are during the day. And the whole landscaping of that area will provide opportunities for the public to wander around during the day. If you come to the Kennedy Center during the day, it is a memorial. We're open from 10 o'clock until midnight, but there's very little activity in the building itself for you to actually engage in. By moving our rehearsals and classrooms into the expansion, it frees up some area in the main building to have exhibitions, and allows people to wander through the landscape, maybe go to the cafe. What we're making it easier for people to do is to engage by foot traffic, but we don't believe it'll have any impact on vehicular traffic. That all, of course, is getting studied as part of the environmental assessment and the process.
Well, I know in DC, usually the criticism is, or, you know, where are people going to park, and are you bringing all these people in my neighborhood? That's really not what I'm saying, is that there is a problem around the Kennedy Center being very, you know, be able to get there through more multimodal ways, or different ways than having to drive there. Is this an opportunity? Is that something that can be addressed, or we're just, that's how the Kennedy Center is?
Well, we are a bit locked by roadways all around, so it is a little bit challenging, but this does provide a greater opportunity to people, for people to walk from Georgetown, a direct connection, as well as from the Lincoln Memorial. We still have our shuttle that we go back and forth from the metro to the Kennedy Center that operates all day long until midnight. In addition, we have bike racks, and we have a bike chair location at the Kennedy Center. We hope with this expansion that we'll be able to expand those opportunities as well. So if you're biking along the Rock Creek and Potomac Trail, you can leave your bike there, cross the bridge, engage within the Kennedy Center, and then come back and pick up your bike again.
Thank you. Mr. Hart?
Appreciate your presentation. It's a pretty exciting project. The thing that I think I find most interesting and perhaps challenging is your gesture to cross over onto the river. And I would say, don't be timid about it. Really take advantage of it. I mean, once you've bridged over and engaged in the water, my feeling would be to put more over there. Having crossed that threshold, you know, jump into it. So I'm looking forward to further development of this.
Michael Kaiser wants to enlarge that part of it as well. But we had to go through the Army Corps of Engineers today to be sure that we're not in the channel. We're quite a ways back from it, so.
So you've got plenty of room?
We have some room. We have some room.
Good. Thank you.
Mr. May?
Thanks. I don't have a whole lot to add. I mean, I've seen a lot about this project in the last few months, and very excited to see it actually coming before this commission, and look forward to continuing to work with you and with the Kennedy Center as we get through the environmental assessment and try to figure out all the things that we need to do to allow the bridges to pass over the Parkway and to land in the, in the Parkway and there, and of course, the riverbed, which, depending on how this is done structurally, you will need to do, will need to take certain steps to permit that as well. But we look forward to working with you on it. It's, I'm personally very excited.
Other comments? Hearing none? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We look forward to more collaboration. That ends the open session agenda, end of the meeting. Is there anything else to come before us?
Mr. Chairman, I know you want to join me in welcoming our new colleague.
Indeed.
To my left, the.
I'm remiss for having done, not done that, so please, introduce.
Harper in the Senate.
Yep, great. Thank you. We are adjourned.